Yeah, I thought we drunk at this was stuff we had.
Greetings, everyone. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Finance Appropriation Advisory Committee, Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioners, Monday, January 13th, 2025. Sorry for the delay. First order business, the Pledge of Allegiance, and this meeting is being recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the residents of Dudley, send our sympathies to the family of Frank Adecky, passed away unexpectedly at a rather young age. Frank was a former member of the Fire Department, rose to the rank of chief before he went to a full-time chief. Frank also worked for the Highway Department for a number of years. He was the tree warden, local business owner, just a nice guy. And I know I speak on behalf of the board when I send the sympathies to his two sons, Christopher and Brian, and everybody that knew him. And also, on a more celebratory note, the board would like to recognize the retirement of Mike Krajec from Watersua. Mike also was a water commissioner for a number of years, Highway Department employee for a number of years. I don't have the exact timeline in front of me, but I believe he served the town for almost 40 years. So we wish Mike well, health and happiness, and an enjoyable retirement. At this point, before we get going, I'll turn it over to the Chair of the FAA, and he can introduce his new member, although we didn't meet him, he can have a few words to say for the town people.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we do have a new member, Brian Clark, and he's joined us. I guess you guys had him appointed a couple of weeks ago or whatnot, and just wanted to give him the opportunity to maybe introduce himself.
Yeah, Brian Clark. I've been in Dudley since 2010 and happy to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you stepping forward, and as we say in every meeting, we have plenty of seats for more people that want to come. I think we have four openings right now currently on FAA.
That's correct.
So if there's people out there that want to step forward, Robin Watson and Mr. Clark could recently get on the board, we can take a few more people. First on the agenda, number two, approval minutes from 12:30, 2024. What is the board's pleasure?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson. Any further discussions, concerns, or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Number three, Citizens Common. Anybody wishing to speak tonight that is not on the agenda and does not require a vote of the board, now is your chance. Seeing none. Number four, license permits. Common Vic's license, sorry, Barangi Dudley, Inc., Subway 28162157, West Main Street, manager, try Rohit Patel. Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, you can come up to the podium if you want. Before he comes up, Mr. Town Administrator, Mr. Madam ATA, is everything in order with their permitting?
Mr. Chairman, I received the application from Subway and they asked to be placed on the 113 agenda. They've also been working with the Board of Health and getting all of their necessary permits as well.
So that they're square with us, but they haven't got everything else yet?
They're square with us for the Common Vic application, yes.
Sir, take a moment to introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Rohit Patel. I'll be the manager. I have an owner, Neral Patel with me as well, if he wants to join. I live in Auburn, Massachusetts, and I've been in Massachusetts since 15 years.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Neral Patel. I live in Auburn as well. I've been a Subway franchisee for past 15 years. I've been doing, currently own four Subways. This is going to be my fifth one. I'm excited to do business in Dudley. Dudley is also my second home, as my wife and my father-in-law from here.
Nice. Welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions? The applicant? Are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Any comments, questions from the crowd? Hearing none. How would you like the motion to read, Mr. Administrator?
Motion to approve the Common Vic license and naming the name of the business.
So motion to approve the issuance of a Common Victus license. If I said it wrong, correct me, Barangi?
Yeah. There's a small correction in the corporation. It's a B-A-J, it's not B-A-Y.
Oh, just a typo on that.
Yeah, the typo on that, yeah. So I just want to make sure of that.
Yep, no, perfect. So we'll make sure that is changed to B-A-J-R-A-N-G-I?
Correct.
Dudley, Inc., doing business as Subway 28162. What is the board's pleasure?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second, Mr. Shanes. Any further questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Public Business, Colonial Power Group, welcome back. Municipal Aggregates Energy, indicative pricing, BOs voting to price, voting for pricing authorization for TA, taking on an action relative there, too. Aye, folks.
Good evening. Mark Capitano, Colonial Power. I'm here with Denise Allard at Colonial Power. Last time we were in, I believe it was the last meeting, you asked us to grab some indicative pricing. Believe it's in your packet. You're seeing what's there. So from a pricing perspective, you certainly have some choices as far as pricing is concerned. I'm seeing some, again, I think we went through this. You can see the 18, my eyes go to the 18 month and the 30, what would be the third column over at 12, 830. It's in, might be shaded in gray or in the orange. That's the 18 month, and then the 30 month, it's in the final column. Both of those are, one of them's about two cents savings, the other one's about a penny and a half of savings. And just to give you an idea, the savings at two cents is around $12 a month. A penny and a half is around $9 a month per customer if you use 600 kilowatts. And then the other pricing that's here shows those, the other products that we had discussed, the 37% National Wind, and then the 5% Mask Glass Ones. Both of those are increased from there, but when we discussed it the last time, we're talking about the default product being the meats. There's a lot of numbers in front of you. I'm happy to go through each and every one of them, talk about what I see. I just, I wanted to hit the highlights.
Yeah, we'll let you continue with your presentation, and then we'll just come up with questions.
Okay, so I just want to say this. The, what's shaded in, on the screen, in orange is the low price for that term. So looking across what would be supplier two, they have the two low prices for the 12 and the 18, and then supplier, which is four, would have the low prices for 24 and 30, and that's on the opt-out product. And really, that's it, at least from our perspective. I want to just give you a big picture. So from a pricing perspective, we haven't seen a 12 pricing, 12 for national grid, and probably be 36 months for you since pricing went, so from a historical standpoint, 12-8 for an annual price is still a little lofty, but I still don't see prices coming down just given the renewable portfolio standard continues to step up. I find this pricing to be adequate. I wouldn't say it's great, but I also, with the cold weather that we're having, I don't see it getting any better right now. The latest Nahua has another two weeks of cold.
So the 12-8, for point of reference, is the 18 month.
That's an 18 month. That's correct.
Okay.
And then, if you were to, just to give you an idea, it's about a little over a mil and a half. You're raising, if you wanted to go out to the 30 month, to the individual customer, you'd be looking at around 90 cents, the difference between the 30 month and the 18. Individual customer impacts.
Any questions?
Hi. You mentioned with the cold months that would affect the price. That tells me we might be better off doing that, doing this in the summer. Would that be accurate?
So from the winter months affecting the price, what I was talking about is, and you could see it right here. If you look at 12 months, you're at 13.5. You mix in the other off-winter months, and you're down to 12.8. It had more to do with that than pricing itself. We certainly do not have to take pricing now. I would say you're not at a bad time in the market. We're not at a great time in the market either. And I'm just, I don't know what the world's going to think about the Gulf of America, or Greenland, or the 51st state. So I would think it might have a settling effect, but those things affect the electricity markets here because they're going to affect its global, its global economics. So make no mistake.
Maybe more people, more of a discount. Who knows? Who knows how that will affect?
Do they, do they look at that? When you give us like the numbers? They, like, just say we vote. That number doesn't change if we get like 90% of the town to sign up, right? Once it's locked, it's locked.
Once it's locked, it's locked.
Yeah, one person, you're gonna have 10,000.
That is correct. Well, you have the, we know what the hard number is in Dudley. We actually have all the people that are participating.
Right.
So that number won't change. I'll say this is a commodity, so as long as you're not buying an odd lot, as long as, you know, you're about a megawatt of power here, a little bit less, you're perfectly fine. If you buy 10 megawatts, you don't get a discount. If I buy an ounce of gold, or I buy 10 ounces of gold, it's the same price. This is truly a market, it's a commodity, so there's no Walmart discounts. Just not the way, just not the way the futures market works.
Right.
I think you had a question.
So what is the compared, so today's price compared to one year ago, compared to two years ago? Just want to get an idea. You mentioned historical, but I don't know if you really, like, broke it down.
So I didn't break it down by date here, but I don't know if you have this in your packet or not?
We don't.
This, this graph, is that in the packet or no? That one there, yeah. I just wanted to show, this is what National Grid has done as of late, and it kind of shows you the bumps in the road. You'll probably remember that. But we just haven't seen this kind of pricing in a while for National Grid.
Pretty much flattened out.
So this is a projection, and the reason that's flattened out, the way National Grid used to grow out, has changed. They used to grow out in November, and then again in May. What they did was split the winter, so this never happens again.
And is there in like an annual, with certain things, they go up like 3% a year, insurance goes up?
It's not, no. It's truly a market. It's a futures market.
Can I ask your question?
That's up to them.
They just, you have to come up and identify yourself.
My name is Jim Martin. I've been in Dudley for about 40 years, and something you, something he said was he expects the rates to go up, but according to that chart on the blue line, the rates are going to come down from today for the next four or five years. Can you explain that?
Absolutely. So on this blue line, what we have is right up to date here, and that will be the National Grid rate. It'll be 14, 6, 7, 2. You also see this on this pricing. Everything after that is a projection by us in red. And the reason we think that this will go up slightly is only because there's two winter months in the next round. So from August right through January, there'll be two winter months, not one. So it sounds odd, but that's their winter pricing. We expect it, all things being equal, to be slightly higher than this current price.
You explained at the last meeting that that only recently, recently changed the way they do that.
Literally just changed in the last six months.
Right, to avoid the, see, that's big spike.
Tried to spread out the winter months on one pricing packet, and not one price, and then the other one was the two months.
That's exactly correct.
Lot more summer months.
You can see that where it kind of happened, there were the spiky winter, summer, up the dips and the high points, and then it's kind of evening out. That's when they started, when they changed the procurement periods for the utilities.
So basically, everything from...
Difference between this and this. So this one here is meats. This is the minimum renewable. This has 37% National Wind, and this has 5% renewable.
So basically, that chart we're looking at up here.
Yes.
I'm reading it correctly, where the, like, the 016 and blue.
Yes.
That's now, everything after that, with little peaks and valleys in the red, is your projections.
Exactly.
No, just your, just your experience and your knowledge and your trends.
So all we've done here, I just want you to know, all we've done is take, snap the line on whatever day. Let me just see here. As of Friday, we took the price, and then we just extrapolated it out.
Right.
So this is as of 19. No magic in this at all.
Yeah, just want to be clear, there's no crystal ball here.
I'd love to get one. I'd love to get one.
Anybody else?
So we didn't get a copy of it, Robin Watson, at Dresser Hill Road. So can you reiterate the fixed price residential for 12 months and 18 months again? I want to make sure.
Absolutely. So the low price again, and that was with supplier two, for 12 months would be 13, 5, 1, 0. And that's compared to a price of 14, 6, 7, 2 for National Grid, and then the 18 month would be 12, 8, 3, 0.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? What are we looking for tonight, then, Mr. Administrator? Give you the authority?
Completely up to the board at this point, Mr. Chairman.
What's the board's pleasure? I don't know, I'll jump in at once.
I just want to make one other point.
Please.
If all things remain the same or slightly came down, I would expect on your 12-8, out of the gate, you're gonna definitely have savings to the 14-6. Then I think it goes up slightly. So for the next, I'm gonna say, 10 months, guaranteed savings, the contract is almost going to, now, anything could happen. We could, let's say Mr. Putin sat at a drop bombs, you'd have the best contract you could imagine for the next 18 months. If everyone decides to sit around and sing kumbaya, because possibly they don't want to get into a war with the Americans, maybe this isn't the best price, but I just don't know what's going to happen. So I, this pricing, everything being equal today, nothing happens, everyone stays in its pack, probably delivers you savings for, at a minimum, the next 10 months at the 12-8 price.
So what would the board like to do?
I just, I just want to point out one thing. If you look at this graph up until today, if you, it's kind of noisy, but if you smooth that out, you've got a, you've got an upward slope. You end at about 14, 15, 16, you started at 10. So you went up from 10 to 15, 16, you went up about .1 a year on average between 2020 to 2025-ish. If we can lock that in, we stop that 1% a year on average. Does that make sense? I think it makes sense to do it.
Make that, you agree with what he was saying? We smoothed it out by locking the price in.
There is no question, that's a correct statement. I just, the 33 skews that graph so much. That's my problem.
Yeah, but if you take that out, if you draw a line from the beginning to the end.
And there is a number over there to give you the averages for the three, so the three-year average is 18, but get rid of that. The five-year give you a decent average of 15, and we're projecting around 15, 4, so you're below the average.
You start at about 9.098, call it 10, call the other side 15, just round numbers, even. You're going up about a penny a year.
And the...
Mr. Chairman, so what Kerry's saying is, if you just put a linear fit between the first and the last lines, you know where it's going, right?
Right, and take out the anomaly of the 33.
Fibonacci.
Absolutely.
We love our charts and graphs, yeah.
Hold on, it's perfectly fine. That's what we wanted to deliver some numbers. The one thing I should tell you is, when you do the math, this 14 is, should not be the price. There's some risk premium put on this on basic service, just given the amount of aggregations going out, so. It's a little higher than it should be. That's all I'm going to tell you. How long it stays there, I'm not certain. But that is the price that's been approved by the Department of Public Utilities. That will be the price starting January, I mean, excuse me, February 1st.
What do you think?
How do you, how would you like the motion?
I would like the motion to read, Mr. Administrator, except the...
Well, we have to imagine what the pricing's going to be in 12 hours, right?
Again...
It shouldn't, shouldn't change between tonight. They're just gonna refresh, so.
I would expect if you want to, half a mil is, a half a penny one way or the other, is more than enough. If it moved that, I'd say, unless it's down, if it went down, that's, if it went down a penny, that's fine. But if it went up more than half a penny, I'd say we hold.
And I guess just the other question is on the products. We got the three most economical because we know the town was interested in maximizing savings. The question is, do you want to offer all three? Or do you want to, you know, this is, this is the most economical, so that's what everyone would be automatically moved to if they didn't opt out? Do you want to have two options, or do you only want one option? Totally up to the town, certainly.
So the default option, I believe, would be the most economical one, and then we would provide alternatives to residents who may want to...
Use renewables.
Use renewables.
Right, that affects the price slightly.
Slightly.
I think that's the right way to go. I think that's the right way to go.
But the default would be the least expensive.
That is correct.
So someone just calls, says, I want it.
I want to pay a little more for a little greener.
Right, but if somebody just says, give me the best, give me what you got, and then they'll get it.
When we do the mailing, everyone will be put into that basic, and then they could opt up if they decided to.
They would call and say, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm economically conscious, I'd like to-
Yes. I, I'm looking to green up my buy.
Yeah. So I guess the motion has to say something to the effect, to take the best economical price, unless the administrator hears that it, there was a significant change.
A deviation beyond half, half percent, right?
Correct. So you want to hot, put a hard number in there, like, that's your, that's your recommendation too? Anything more than a half?
If it moved up, I would say, let, let's hold. I, I don't see it happening, but if it moved up more than .005-
And then we wouldn't, then we could also phrase it so we don't have to meet, if it goes, just worst-case scenario, goes up a little bit tomorrow, we put the brakes on, goes down Wednesday to where we're comfortable, we can have the administrator execute it on your recommendation.
Absolutely.
That's correct.
Or you're, you're giving the, giving the price.
Absolutely. By no means tomorrow, it has to be signed. If, if for any reason, anything's unhappy, we hold, and we can go back out in a week, two weeks, it's not a problem.
Right, right. Any other questions, FAA?
And the only, I'm sorry. The only thing I would say about waiting is, you wait, and it's longer at the institute on the tail end, so that they know, the residents can't take advantage of better pricing until we're locked in.
Right.
So, and right now, we're looking at, what, April?
Right, this is for an April start, to, to, to launch in April, you need 60 days leave time at the utility, so something would need to be signed by the end of January. If we went beyond the end of January, we'd have to push to a May start, and then you're only comparing to the existing national grid rate through the end of July, so you'd be mailing with, with one less month guaranteed savings against the national grid rate. So just something to consider.
Right, I think that's the way we should proceed then.
So then, yeah, and I, I mean, natural gas is, is rising rapidly, and we can help the residents somehow by locking something, we should do it. With that being said, I, I'm going to try this motion. I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to enter into an agreement with-
Colonial Power.
Colonial Power. At the, the default listed here would be the default, the two additional renewable options, to enter at his discretion with a maximum of half of a penny increase from the numbers presented to us today.
For what term? Wasn't, there a question between like one here and-
Was it 18, what we're talking about?
Was that the 18-month term?
He, the way he placed it, though, I thought it was better because he just said the, the lowest price is what he was looking for. If that turned out to be the 30-month, he would sign the 30-month.
If we can lock in a lower price for 30 months as opposed to 18, that, that trend shows me over time, like everything else, we're going up. If we can lock in no rate, and, and I'm just thinking out loud, if I'm wrong, if someone disagrees, please say something, but as, as long as we can lock in a low price without inflation, I think it makes sense.
Just the one, the, the contract will be signed with a low-priced supplier, not colonial. Whoever, those suppliers up there, 1, 2, 3, and 4, are companies that provide electricity. We're the aggregator, we work for you.
Right.
And he just mentioned colonial, I just don't want it to be.
No, no.
It would be the low price, low-priced supplier.
Yeah, you don't actually generate the power.
Correct.
Well, you're, you're the one here, and things could change.
Exactly, but I, I just, the contract would never be with us. This would definitely be with one of the, you know, the lowest-priced supplier.
What's the lowest one is? 1, 2, or 3?
Yes, correct.
Good, Mr. Clark? Mike? We have a motion?
Did we decide on a term?
Oh, he's going to give us, the way the motion is read, it's going to be best-
Yeah, the most favorable term, right?
The most favorable term.
Yeah.
So if the best price is 18 months, it's 18.
Correct.
You can lock in 20 years.
We're expected to come back in 18 months and talk again, right?
Yeah. They have a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Johnson with a second. Any questions, concerns, comments from the citizens? Mr. Zakowski.
And just, I'm, I'm glad to see this happening. I just signed a voucher the other day, well in, well in excess of $20,000 for one month of electricity, for one, one, one half of our department.
I thought you meant the house.
Is that, oh, oh, God.
Yeah, and just to clarify-
For water department. It was well over 20,000, oh, I believe it was $28,000 for one month.
And just to clarify, and I, I know you're using it for an example, but this does not apply municipal. For, we, we have a separate contract for municipal pricing, but we do have a project going on at the landfill, which will give the water and sewer the opportunity to take advantage of solar credits.
Good.
Which will-
Any, anything that'll bring the prices down.
Will that affect the rates, then? You bring the rates back down?
Rates are set by what, what it costs, just like with them. They go up, they go down.
So we, still waiting for the down. So we have a motion, a second. We had comments, anybody else? Sir? Mr. Bot, I think you said your name was.
I, I just want to clarify a couple of things. The town is either going to sign up for 12 months, 18, 24, or 30, one of those four options, one of those four prices.
Whatever the best price is.
Okay. Number two, this is just for the supply side and has absolutely nothing to do with the transmission charges on a bill. Is that correct?
Correct. And that's where the discounts are applied for, applied for seniors and so forth, it's off the transmission charges as opposed to the supply side. So nobody who currently enjoys discounted, you know, discounts-
Won't affect that.
Will have no effect on them.
As you said, the only one it may affect is someone who's locked in somewhere else that has to pay a fee to get out to get the better rate.
And that's me.
Me too.
Okay. One, one more thing. Does this have anything to do with the solar going in at the landfill?
No.
No.
This does not.
No, okay.
This does not.
Does the solar going in at the landfill going to help us?
It'll help from, in an indirect, save, we'll realize some savings when we become municipal off-takers. The schools will become, and, and the municipal government will become off-takers of those solar credits. So the taxes we pay for the lights here will go down because we'll be getting a better rate from the, from the solar project.
So the town is going to maybe get some benefit, but the residents right now won't see any benefits from the solar at the landfill? Is that what you, I don't know, I'm, I'm just trying to think, is that what you said?
It'll trickle down.
It'll, it, that's what I said.
Okay.
But the, but again, Amoresco sells their solar elsewhere, so if they, if, I guess indirectly, you can make an argument that if people opted for solar as part of their more greener option, they could take advantage of that indirectly, but right now, it's, it's, we're municipal off-takers of some of that solar on our landfill, so I, we won't pay as much for electric.
We don't-
For town buildings, for town buildings only.
And we don't utilize all the solar that's generated there.
Correct. There's, there's way more solar generated than we could ever use.
That we have used. So they, they give us the benefit, and they also sell off their excess.
You're saying the stuff at the, the landfill is going to be much more than the town needs? Is that what you said?
What it generates.
Correct. Okay. But not much, it's not enough for what all the town's residents need?
No.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Good questions, thank you. Everybody good?
I'm good.
Call to a vote, all in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, unanimous. Thanks, folks.
Thank you very much.
And again, we talked before, you guys will set up some kind of presentation outreach.
Absolutely.
With the senior center, through the senior director.
Yeah, maybe one here. Olivia, take care of us.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Got to get off easy tonight, even come up and talk. All right, next up on the agenda. Discuss, going to discuss the distribution of the DLS report to the Board of Selectmen, the FAA. Clerk of the Board, Mr. Shanes, is going to read just the 16 bullet points. We will allow a brief discussion if necessary, but I'm not doing a deep dive on the report tonight, it was only made public at the end of last week, and we'll come forward with an action plan after we hit the 16 bullet points therein. At this point, I will turn it over to our clerk.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So just to go over the, the 16 recommendations. First recommendation, discontinue use of reserves and one-time revenues for the operating budget. Second recommendation, convert the elected treasurer-collector position to an appointed position. Third point, establish a community study, sorry, establish a government study committee, and I know we'll discuss it in a minute, but that government study committee would be looking at a review of how government works in neighboring communities, as well as our community, and what we could take or add, or, or how we can best, you know, process going forward. The fourth bullet point was resolve state and local fiscal recovery funds compliance report. Fifth piece was codify financial scheme in a bylaw. Sixth was create a budget bylaw. Seven, adopt formal financial policies. Eight, maintain revenue and expenditure forecast. Nine, review revolving funds. Ten, prioritize harbor payroll self-serve implementation. Eleven, consider bi-weekly payroll. Twelve, modify the cash book. Thirteen, transmit statement of receipts weekly to accountant. Fourteen, conduct cash and receivables reconciliations monthly. Fifteen, explore using bill scanner expedite payment pro, to expedite payment processing. And sixteen, review tax title and foreclosure accounts.
So I just want to, first off, thank DLS that came in to do this. There was a push by a faction, citizens' faction, that wanted an audit. We were assured that the state auditor would handle it, but obviously, they did not, did not want to. DLS came in, and I'm sure anybody that was a full-time employee or other elected officials, DLS was here for, I feel like it was a pretty thorough review, so if anybody's got a couple of quick questions or comments, I'll allow it, but we're not going to go 1 through 16 tonight. I think I'm going to ask the board for their input, obviously. I think our next step should be to task the administrator and his staff to come up with a action plan, present us either progress reports, I'm not sure if we get them all done for the next meeting, but keep us apprised on how we're going to go about either implementing or acting on any or all or some of these recommendations. So if anybody on the board has anything they want to add before I see if the public has a question?
Are we going to have a time where the public, kind of like a public hearing sort of thing? Maybe call it that, maybe not, something to, to get comment? And, and my thought on that is, like you had mentioned, this, this request sprang from a request for an audit, and this was in a, in a, in essence, managerial audit, sort of thing. And if people ask for it, I think we should give them an opportunity to ask questions on it at some point in the future. I'm, like you said, I'm, I'm not asking for that today, but at some point in the future.
Well, I would think we definitely will have public input, because as we go to establish the government study committee, it didn't give us guidance per se on how to form that committee, but I'm sure we're going to have discussion on who would like to serve, who would be willing to step forward, the composition of the committee, but as we go forward, the action plan, that'll be, I'm sure it'll be part of the action plan, and we will have a public hearing format, public comment format. Mike, looking to get something to say?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
Anybody else on the board before I look to the public?
I think that, I think that the report, now, I've read it a couple of times, and there's a lot in a short amount of time, like, in, in not so many pages, there is no, it doesn't feel to me like there's any filler in this report. It's very concise and to the point as, as concise as you can be with a report like this. Based on that, coming away with 16 recommendations, you know, I think that as we're doing this, or as the town administrator's office starts to come up with an action plan, it's going to be huge to try to figure out, like, how we want to prioritize these, because I, I don't know that you can argue that we don't need anything that's in the report, but how we prioritize it is going to be huge.
Correct. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Johnson?
I, I absolutely agree. There's a, if, if there's so much that could be done, the, the key is to understand the impact versus the effort. Like, obviously, there's going to be some things in here that would take incredible effort and possibly have limited impact or, or improvement opportunities, but there could be some low-effort activities that could have two, three times the impact that of, of the cost, right? So you want to analyze each one in that way, and if anyone wants to see tools on how to do that, we can get that.
No, and again, not to go through every one, I'm just going to take, for, just for a discussion purpose, number one, continue, discontinue use of reserves and one-time revenue for operating budget. I mean, I defer to the town administrator, but we, as a board, I know publicly, two or three years, excuse me, at least two or three years ago, we discussed that openly, more than, even in the past, that's, that's not good practice. We know it.
I think we've had many, many budget hearings where this board, me, the FAA, particularly the chairman, have talked about, you know, not using one-time sources of revenue for ongoing operational costs. That's pretty standard stuff.
Right.
At some point, you know, that needs to be addressed. At some point, we have to figure out how we can not have to do that on an annual basis. But, you know, it's, that's something we've spoken about in the past, and continue to do publicly almost every single budget cycle since, since before I was TA.
Right, I mean, in the, the common refrain or argument is, run it like a business. It's hard when we're not a business, we are service-oriented, and I've used the example before, and I think it's appropriate, we talk about funding your own department, for example, and I'm going to pick on them because they're sitting here, that's like telling the police chief, we need revenue from tickets to fund his department, or tell him the police, the fire department, we need ambulance revenue or fire permit revenues to run his department. We don't tell, like, those, those gentlemen, we don't tell the building inspector, generate enough permits and penalties to run your department. The, the, a, a business model, in my opinion, doesn't fit, because we're not, we're not profit-driven, we don't, we don't keep, everything goes back to the general fund, so whatever departments generate, everything goes to the general fund and gets passed out, more or less, pretty much everything gets passed back out. So we can't, people, I think, got to get away from, you're a business model, because we're not profit-driven, because if we were, you'd be getting, a building permit costs you $10,000 for a shed, I'm just making it up, but you know what I mean? We would have to raise the price to impact the budget in a positive way, and it's, that's not, that's not the way it works. It can't be done that way. Mr. Johnson?
I'd say a little differently. I'd say, I, I understand what you mean. I, I'd say, you know, we're, we're focused on only providing what the townspeople agree they want within the revenue constraints that we have, which should be a touch less than even, because you hopefully can put a little bit away to invest for rainy day and/or inflation, inflation-proofing, so. So, but to your point, it's, it's not, you wouldn't try to do that in a business, you don't try to get, you know, twenty percent on top and, you know, all that stuff. But it's, it's less, it's, instead of straight-up sales to the customer, it's trying to ascertain what the, what the residents and taxpayers are looking for within the revenue rules and regulations.
And, you know, we've done that. I mean, you go to town meeting, and all we do is present the budget, FAA reviews it, we come up with numbers for departments, present it to the voters out of there, I mean, it was a couple of years ago, or more than once, but the streetlights got shut off. Didn't have money. One year, they took away the thousand dollars for the veterans agent to buy flags. Literally did not have a thousand dollars to buy flags. It's tough, you know, it's tough choices that we all have to, you know, make them in your own home, I get it. I mean, we all live in town, you know? You're on a board and you live in town. So any decision made at town meeting affects you, affects your family, affects your children, affects your parents if they're still alive. Mr. Mayor, you keep looking like you got something to say.
I, no, not really. I will ask one question, though. Did we pay for this?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But some of the recommendations, as we get into them...
Oh, I mean, I, I take a lot, I don't mean to sound facetious, I'm taking a little different approach on this. I'm looking at this stuff, kind of looks like somebody just went onto ChatGPT and said, "Give me sixteen bullet points on how to make a town more efficient," and that's what you got. I mean, most of these bullet points, we go, we do anyway, or we don't do, you know? I don't know what you would do to improve anything. Discontinue use of reserves and one-time, I mean, yeah, we'd love to do that, but that's impossible when you don't have any money, right? You're using up your reserves.
I mean, that was, that was clear in their report, too, and they...
You know, get rid of, get rid of your treasurer and hire somebody instead of an elected, I don't agree with that.
Well, nobody said get rid, Mike, when I...
I'm just, I'm just saying this.
But, please, no one said get rid of.
But, you know, it just looks like general bullet points that anybody could have wrote up, honestly. I read through the whole thing, and it's not much in here that would...
Well, you could interview, too, didn't you?
What time?
Didn't DLS interview you?
Little bit, yeah. But there was really not much we could do, that could change much, anyway, you know?
I mean, some things are philosophical differences, and some are, like, seem like no-brainers to me. Like, I used to get paid monthly, and I can't believe that people here are getting paid weekly. I mean, that just seems like a saving paperwork right there. That one just seems pretty straightforward, you know? You're gonna get your money, you're not gonna get less.
So to prove, I'm sorry.
I just want to touch on yours. You know, you could say that the sixteen headings, possibly ChatGTP, but read underneath it, it's specific to the town.
Well, yeah, there's...
Like, does the government study...
I wasn't trying to be that general...
The town conducted a government study in 2003, so someone actually looked, I, someone actually looked...
I didn't want to be that specific, like, just say, you know, I was trying to make a point that...
They talked to me for over an hour and a half.
There's not much in here that helps, what I see helps us do a better budget or try to find money that doesn't exist or something like that.
And that's why we're, that's why we're all gonna talk about it, and we're gonna figure out what works for all of us, and whatever people vote for is gonna happen.
You know, I echo Mr. Clark, some of this stuff, it does seem simple, and some of it was already tried.
Yeah. Some of it's in progress, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Clark's example of the bi-weekly payroll, we know that, we've been talking about it. Every time a union contract comes up, though, we have to bargain it into the union contract.
Most of it's kind of...
And we're on year three of going through that cycle so we can implement everything all at once.
As my place calls it, political.
Yeah, it was, you're right.
Get to play with politics, and sometimes it takes a while to get over it, get through.
But, but there's a lot in here. I mean, maintain revenue and expenditure forecast, I mean, we're already doing that now. Review revolving funds, we do that every year, we go through all of this stuff.
Well, they want us to get rid of some of the revolving funds. If you dive into that a little bit, they're thinking we have too many, and the fund should be going directly into the general fund as opposed to taking a pit stop in the revolving fund. So they, they want us to more than just review it like we do every year, they want us to review and draw the line through some of it.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this is, some of this conversation is exactly why we're supposed to hold off the deep dive until everyone can actually read it instead of the bullets.
Right, so that's what we're gonna do before we move on. Anybody from the public want to speak?
Good evening. Thank you for a few minutes to speak. My understanding, tonight, the board is going to go through, they've officially recognized the report, they're not gonna go through line by line. I have a response to more than one of the recommendations. I don't think now is the time to go through and read it, in that the board's accepted this, and sometime at the next meeting or successive meeting, there would be discussion and in the future, action on it. My comments on the sixteen aside, I view this objectively, if the report you requested had sixteen speaking points, it's not a cafeteria, you don't pick four, you don't omit one, the financial team meets every other week. Reasonably, we should be prioritizing, someone mentioned low-hanging fruit. Operationally, there are a handful of items in here of the sixteen, which would be yesterday's news in that they are simple to effectuate. The idea of your example, Mr. Chairman, we're only gonna budget to ninety or ninety-five percent and not touch a single reserve in the next budget cycle, it's not something that could be done overnight. I would like to see the financial team with an input from yourself, of course, maybe the chair of the FAA, maybe if we get another person in there to prioritize the sixteen. Some are no cost. Your town administrator made mention that they're already in progress. Maybe a report back to the Board of Selectmen on the sixteen at the next meeting is in order?
Well, the thing, too, Rich, is, you know, everybody knows, some of these are long-term actions, too. There's nothing gonna be coming up, like at the Maytown meeting, you know, there's nothing, I would, I would think just a government study committee made up of residents would have to have a nine or ten-month window to operate.
And, and the discussion with the assembled group would go through and say, okay, reasonably to do whatever number that is correctly, it would require two, three monthly time, it could be done in two weeks, whatever it would be, but the return to the Board of Selectmen, the FAA and the general public, is that these sixteen recommendations have been reviewed, this is the group that can be done with minimal cost and/or are currently already completed. And the other ones, which are long-term plans, make that part of the end-of-the-year goal going into the next year, and make it the cornerstone for the next budget session. Effectuate what you can in the current budget. That's, everybody has their opinion, and, and we're all here because Dudley is the priority. And objectively, you have someone outside of the town who's put together their, their thoughts, and almost to the answer to the audit committee, they're due, they're due a response. And I, and I don't think that's unreasonable to go through and have a return at the next Selectmen's meeting with, with a summary of the sixteen, not specifically, the sixteen as they need to be addressed, certain long-term, some are long-term, some are short-term, however, however it goes.
Right, and I think going forward, this is gonna be like an agenda write-down update. Some meetings, it may be nothing, but we're gonna look in two weeks, hopefully, and have the administrator come back with, this is what I see, like, like we were just discussing. Some of these can be handled outside of town meeting or outside of this, this group setting, and some are gonna have to be through town meeting. We gotta give the people the choice. I mean, we all, most of us have lived through the 2003 charter study committee, we, we had a grant that we paid for, came back, recommended a DPW, got defeated at town meeting, so some of these things have already been attempted, and they were on recommendation of an outside agency or an outside group that did it professionally. Wasn't anything that anybody here put together, and it got defeated. That's the will of the people, that's how it goes. So we can, as we can get this group together, we can get an action plan, and we can bring it forward in May of '26, and it could all be for naught, not all, we don't say, recommendations for naught.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, we, we had a call from outside of this, the people who are here this evening for an audit committee. We have a response, and we need to put the best foot forward answering what's in here to the public who made the call for the audit committee. And if the general public doesn't vote in favor of the changes put forward, the town can always look back and say, we've done what we asked, and it was not the will of the people, which case you go to the next scenario. If, whatever that, that next challenge is going to be, we address it given the constraints moving forward. That's, that's, that's how I see it. This is, this is open and transparent, and, and everything in here can be quantified, But that's my, my, my thought is, back to the original, the original comment, we have a financial team meeting every other week. We need to go through and sort of assign a difficulty task to one through sixteen, the easiest one being done, you know, within a week or two, without, like you said, without a town meeting vote. And then obviously, there are some big changes in there, but you could take a step towards the right direction, you know, when it comes to revenues and things like that. But it's, would need to be explained for this group here as well as the general public. Not everybody understands proposition two and a half, the constraints, what's gonna be required, so...
I agree. It's apparent that people are already getting passionate about it, and not people here, people, before it's even been discussed, have already taken shots at the, but it's okay. I mean, none of us called DLS and asked them to push their results or to change their results, but we had indications on the last study from the AG's office, people, there were proponents of what they had put forward, called them and asked them to do favorable reviews, and the AG made footnote, made sure we, everybody knew, thanks for your input, but that's not the way it works. So we'll just, we'll move this forward, and we'll get an action plan, and we'll see where we're at.
So basically, today was just a brief discussion?
Yeah, accepted.
Voter any actions relative thereto, we don't have to vote on it.
The only thing we could do is...
In the next meeting, we'll get a, an update from the town administration.
If you want to make it as a motion, ask the town administrator to...
If we do that, Mr. Chairman, why don't we ask the town administrator to provide a draft action plan for us to have another go at, to make sure, and give me the opportunity to meet with the financial team and Sarah and Rich and talk about timelines, and we can draft something up to give to the board.
When that is a motion?
Of course, invite, it'd be great if the FAA could come to another meeting, but I don't think Mike's really...
Yeah, I think that's where we'll go. I mean, we'll give it as, I don't think we need it as a motion, we'll just, we'll just...
Unanimous consent?
Yeah, and if there's a problem, we have to...
Well, that'll be the plan then, Mr. Chairman.
If we don't get something for the 27th, we'll move into February, next meeting. We're not gonna, again, nothing's gonna happen in the next month if we don't get a full action plan on the 27th.
No, and I, and I absolutely agree with that. There are, there are certain things like policy revisions that could be handled quickly. There are other things like study, government study committees that are gonna take some time, you know, so...
Number five, codify financial team in a bylaw. It has to be voted at a town meeting, and that's not going to be at the Maytown meeting, it'll be the October at the earliest, so...
We'll put something together to draft something up, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, good. Anybody else? All right. So I just encourage people, if you're home from watching it, to read it, you know, you can form your own opinion, but just remember, please, that this was done by the Department of Work, so I take it, Mr. Gennovich, let the record reflect, Kerry has to leave. Just remember, people at home, this was done by the DLS, was not done by the Board of Selectmen, and they, in their report, they listed everybody that they spoke to, so they did not speak to the general public and/or so-called stakeholders, that's not the DLS's function, that'll be our function as we go forward. Thank you, everybody. Next up, town meeting, special discussion of timeline for the special town meeting warrant, Mr. Rota.
I just wanted to mention, and I'm gonna ask Olivia to tell me the date on this, we have, we opened for, the board voted to open for citizen petitions tonight, so there's a week in between tonight and the twenty...
Tuesday, the 21st.
The 21st, the citizen petitions to be included on that warrant, and then we're gonna have to vote right away to get it signed, approved, and if, if we don't need another meeting, we won't have one. But we have one week from tonight, just as a reminder, for citizen petitions, not that I'm encouraging it, but...
Nope, but, you know, you gotta do it. So anybody else there, there's a one-week window if there's a citizen's petition? So please bring it forward. Review of the warrant articles, FAA votes, recommendation, or takes any other action relative thereto, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Article one is obviously just your rec, your normal housekeeping article. Article two, for four fifty, five hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred and, or fifteen dollars. Just want to, town administrator could kind of go through the numbers requesting here on this?
Yeah, there, there should be a couple of emails in the FAA packets and the Board of Selectmen packets. One from Weston and Sampson, and I believe on the bottom of that, it shows the Safewell cost, too. Yeah, that's the Safewell one. So there's two ways to do it. We could, we could do it till the end of the fiscal year, ask to borrow for money till the end of the fiscal year, or we could do it for the calendar year, so. There were two different amounts of money we can put in there. The fiscal year is, I think it was three hundred, I don't have it in front of me.
Looks like three twelve, seven fifty.
Yeah, that sounds right. Which lines up with the original borrowing request at Article eight that failed, which was nine hundred and something, and the six hundred thousand dollar grant came through, which we're gonna use to pay off six hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars in borrowing. It, it failed, so we have the grant, we don't need the six hundred grand, but it leaves us that balance of three hundred and change, and those are the final adjusted numbers. And the emails that I actually received from Sean Healy from Weston and Sampson and from Safewell as well, to show us what the projected costs would be, both for the fiscal, remainder of the fiscal year and the entire calendar year.
From 10/1 through 6/30, 25, the LSP services, 104, do we have, all right, so that's through, that's right through the end of the fiscal year, what do, what do we owe them now for Roughly?
What do we pay out of them, about? Maybe forty, fifty grand?
The landfill monitoring, how much have we paid so far for that? The landfill monitoring, how much have we paid so far for that?
That would've included that amount. That's for Weston and Sampson and Safewell since October 1st.
Paid about 40?
Yeah.
And what about the Safewell down at Eagle Drive?
Uh, we have to go back to the invoice, I think it was the actuals on the Safewell invoices. But I think you have that one, Mr. Chairman.
We looking at the Safewell yesterday?
Yeah. So the actual from October 24 for Safewell was 12,296 in October, 6,905 in November, 12,938 in December, and the estimate for this month is 8,897.
Is there an explanation for the variances?
Yeah. The explanation is things come up like they, if they need to change a filter, if it gets plugged up and they didn't necessarily anticipate that it was on a regular schedule and then as a disposal fee because it becomes a hazardous material because it's filled with radon. Those are the type of variances that are coming forward.
Just to build on his question, what happens in March? What's, why is there, what's going on in March that triples everything?
So let's go back to the Weston and Sampson and see what he's gonna line up. My guess would be that there's probably, that everything's due for a filter change and maintenance in, in March, because it only goes a certain amount of time before they need to renew all the poets systems, renew the filters, check everything.
This would be an easy question, you should be able to get the answer from...
So just kinda roughly up to date, we're somewhere around 80,000, we've already paid for all this stuff?
Combined.
Or we have a bill for this, for the eight?
Um, we've, we've paid some of it and we have bills pending. Any questions?
Is there, is there any cost benefit to paying it all upfront or, you know, full year versus fiscal year or is it really just the books?
There isn't because there's always that monthly adjustment. There is some amount of unknown when they check to see how the system is holding up, how the filters are holding up. Any additional pollutants that are found in it, any additional poets that need to be installed that they didn't necessarily count on, but we are getting to the end of the 500-foot bubble and we should have good, solid numbers in terms of how many residents are requiring mitigation and remediation.
Really, if we sign up for the year, it doesn't matter, we're still gonna have those little, you know?
You're right.
Peaks and valleys.
All right, so we, as of last time, we recommended borrowing on this. We don't have enough cash, obviously.
No.
Any other recommendations?
Beyond borrowing?
Have you looked at...
If I knew that a water line was going in and that that was gonna be done at a certain date, it would be easier to make a recommendation to use a one set, one-time source of revenue to, to pay for this. But this has now become an ongoing operational cost like we just talked about, so until we can get an install, a water line installed in there, this just continues on as an ongoing operating cost. I wish there was a, I wish we knew for certain that the end of calendar year 25, we'd have a water line in there, but, and that's the goal.
Right.
Or at least they have construction on the way by the end of 25, but...
So basically, no matter what we do, the 312 is gonna be spent?
It's, well, it's gonna be...
There's nothing we can do to stop that, right?
Yeah, and unfortunately, it's, if we get a judge, we, we have a shared cost agreement with Gentex, which we don't wanna default on because they're not gonna just let it go for this kinda money. We need to negotiate with our water sewer enterprise to see if they're, how much they're willing to pay towards the installation of the water line. They're gaining customers, of course, so there should be some sort of a negotiation there. And then we have to figure out from the general government side, how much we need to appropriate or borrow or transfer to cover the rest of the cost. If we don't do that, if we just say the hell with it, we're not paying...
The, the cost sharing part...
We run the risk of any, any, several of those entities getting a judgment against us and then it just, there's no more discussion, it just gets added to the tax rate.
The cost sharing part with Gentex, that's only if we have a permanent solution, not continuing on with a temporary solution, right? Is that how that works?
The goal has always been to be, been to stop the bleed, depending on what the final cost is.
Right, but if, if this was to continue as a temporary solution going for the next 10 years, Gentex, are they obligated to continue to...
Yes.
During a temporary solution too?
Unless there's something that can exclude them from having to pay it. In other words, if they can forensically figure out that they're not responsible for it, or the town, the same thing, if forensically we can figure out that our landfill has nothing to do with this issue, or Gentex can figure out that there's nothing that they did that has to do with this issue and prove that to the DEP, then maybe there's a, a cause to renegotiate the agreement. But right now, the cost of, for doing forensics on it is prohibitive. We can't even pay for the remediation.
So the agreement, does it, does it renew every year, does it renew every six months, or is it just ongoing until we ask to rem...
I believe the agreement stays in place as it is, but there, but there is a provision there where we speak regularly, we review it to see if any new information has come
You know, again, anybody that was here for the DEP presentation, when we had Mary Jude and this guy's name, Mark, right? The other guy's name?
Mark Ball.
Again, maybe not the exact terminology, a poet mitigates, the water line solves it. And we're both deemed responsible parties to answer your question, unless, like he said, they can come in forensically and say, nope, you guys have nothing to do with it, we're off the hook, or they say, nope, you have nothing to do with it, the hook gets bigger. It's like a death by a thousand cuts, these monthly bills, because they keep coming and they're not going down. I mean, fluctuating down, you know what I'm saying? The floor is never the floor again.
Not going away.
And the ceiling is never, never the ceiling. So we gotta, and as Mr. Ruda kinda just touched on it, the minute we, the minute we don't keep up with our obligation that DEP has deemed us right now, we're gonna get, it'll be lining up. Source.
So the 312 we owe, no matter what, we didn't budget for it. We don't have cash for it.
Right, unless we're breaking into...
So we can either borrow it, go to court, have it assessed upon us, or we can use staple.
One-time source of revenue for an ongoing expense.
You're just saying, you want to go to court, you get hit with damages.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna pay, you're gonna, you have to pay the bill.
If we borrow it, whether we dead exclude it is the next question, but if we borrow it, it gives us some breathing room to pay off, to pay off the note. Instead of having to come up with the, instead of stripping everything out of the savings accounts.
Right, and we may have a stabilization problem coming up with the budget.
Yeah.
Soon.
Correct. Couldn't have come at a better time, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, Ron?
No, my question, originally you've already answered, I wanted to know why there was an increase from the October ask of 300 and something up to 500, but I see it now. One is paid to June and then from July through the end of the year.
Correct.
So what you're asking for is the total of those two, 544.
Correct.
Yeah. So I don't have any other question.
Anybody in the crowd, public? Go, Mike.
Oh, you still want me to go? No, I guess my question is, is the 312, we know we gotta pay, wasn't budgeted for, so the question is, do we, do we include 2020, fiscal year 2026 now or do we budget for that in fiscal, fiscal?
You can, you can ask, ask Rich if I'm getting this correct, but I don't think we borrow the money unless we are going to actually spend it or have spent it. So if we borrowed more, if we authorized borrowing more than what we needed, we don't necessarily have to spend the money. So if a water line came, showed up in September and we still had a few months left of borrowing authorization, we don't need to borrow that money, but here it comes.
Okay, so it's borrowing authorization, it's not saying we're borrowing the whole amount now?
No. I'll, I'll let the expert...
So it's almost like some kinda spending account or something like that where you...
Yeah, wouldn't just...
It goes as they come and...
We generally spend the money and then Rich borrows at the end of the, but he's behind you, so I'm gonna...
No, it just had me thinking interest, like it would be, you know, you'd be paying interest on money you haven't spent yet.
Correct.
It'd be silly, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, the authorization would be your ceiling, the maximum that was allowable for this project, whether it's 10 dollars more than you need or 2 million dollars more than you need. Again, depending on the situation, we borrow what's, what's needed. So I, I think that's an accurate statement. If you're borrowing, if you have the authorization for a million dollars and you needed 312, the balance would be authorized unissued and for the same project, you'd be able to go borrow another 312 or whatever the dollar amount would be remaining. As far as interest goes, if you need to do this, you have to do your analysis. You borrow the money now and expend it right now, so you're spending interest on your upcoming debt payment as opposed to using it, spending something negative, borrowing at the end to make yourself whole when you close out the year and you've cannibalized your investment, say, your investment interest. So it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, but at the end of the day, we're still getting our four and a half percent on it. For borrowing short-term, we're probably getting, we're probably being charged more, but at the end of the day, I think this falls into the classification of this needs to be done because of the consequences if you don't do it.
That's a good synopsis, the consequences of we don't do it.
And, and of course, if you didn't have the authorization to borrow the money and you went through and put in extreme spending limits for the next six months and made sure that you didn't spend 50,000 dollars a month for the next six months, you would go through and create the negative account, sort of offsetting what would've gone to free cash. So it's much easier in a successive year to pay one-fifth of the 312 or whatever the dollar amount is going to be with the interest.
Revenue problem.
Yep. So I, I guess, and I'm still, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, you guys know what happened the last time we put this on, on a warrant, got shot down pretty good for 900,000. We definitely need the 312 to pay the bills. My debate, I guess, is saying, you've put the 554 on there or 544, what happens if that gets shot down again at that level?
Could always amend it, Mr. Chairman, on the floor, the three, the 312, if it looked like it was going south.
But if it goes south, then I'm gonna have to get, somebody's gonna have to get up and bring it back up for reconsideration. And the last time we did that, you could hear it in the crowd, come, you know, all the stuff that came up for reconsideration, it didn't seem like it, I'm just saying, I, I would almost feel more comfortable putting the 312 in and working the rest of the numbers into the fiscal 2026 budget and if, if we have to come again in May, but...
And the question becomes, how do you, where do you, where do you get the revenue for that number?
Well, we're gonna have, we're gonna have issues across the board with revenue.
A new growth is only two, what, 280?
Right. But if this gets shot down, then the only way out of this, how do you get out of it?
Come back in the, in the spring and say...
I think it's how, how we frame it.
Yeah, it's exactly how we frame it.
Oh, I agree, I agree. I mean, people were saying last time, they didn't realize the legal ramifications and...
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it was discussed.
See, I, we know we can let people know that we owe 312 no matter what, we owe that, that's, that's not optional. We don't pay that, obviously, the vendor's gonna go to court to get his money. So we have to pay that. We just don't have the cash.
Going forward, yeah.
We add more, we add into fiscal 2026 instead of putting in our budget. Now you're asking for, you know, over half a million. Depends on how many people show up. I'm just a little nervous that it might get shot down again.
Could we, I hate to say this, but could we separate out the 231 into a separate to do two, yeah?
Is it 231?
Yeah, no, the, so separate the, the 231, 265, that's gonna cover us from July through December as a separate article, so that we at least know, hopefully, that the bill that we need to pay this year is covered and maybe we'll get another bite at the apple if the second half gets shot down in the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, just from the last couple of years of following the, the Facebook thing, that, that town seems to like options. Seems to like, you know, like that's how half the stuff got passed last year. You know, you stripped it down to five options and people voted three in.
Right.
You know, if you, you say all or nothing, people say nothing, you know?
Right, and, and I'm just thinking that like...
We could do two articles.
Right.
We just up...
Totalling to 312.
We could do an article for 312 and one for 231 and make one contingent on the other and, and make it clear that this one is for F, the end of FY '25, this one covers, covers us for calendar year '25 in total.
Yep.
We could go that route.
I think it just might be clearer and then those same, like the same question that, that Robin had about like where the full 544 is coming from, there, there are unfortunately a lot of people that, they don't have time to like research this before we walk into the room. So they'll, they'll show up to town meeting and be like, this was 314 back in October and now it's, it's different. And like you get a little gunshot, I, I am, and I understand it, but...
We could always, or we could hit it again in May.
Yeah, well, and that's the thing, it hits us as an article.
And just put the 312 on. The problem I have is we gotta be very careful because if we don't give us the breathing room with 231, that's gonna come right off the top on July 1st.
It's gonna come from somewhere.
I mean, we're gonna be a quarter of a million dollars in the hole right off the rip.
I'd rather worry about that right now in July than worry about it today. I'd rather get the money today that we need to pay the bills than risk losing it altogether. If you can do it and if we can put it in two, like, like Janet says, we can put it in two separate articles and let people have the choi, you know, put this one, put this one up first for the 312 and then one right behind it for the, for the fiscal year 2026.
We just have to phrase it in a way, it's just, these aren't things we can live without.
Yeah.
Right.
We have to tell people too, the smaller number is calendar year.
It's calendar year.
And then January 1st, the meter starts running again. The bigger number would, as Mr. Ruda said, give us breathing room through the end of the fiscal year. A lot of people don't look at it that way, they look at it as December. But we, as a government, operate fiscally.
Well, if they're gonna vote for the 544, they're gonna do it in two separate articles anyway. We just don't wanna run the risk of it failing on, in the first article altogether, so...
This is purely a budget question, but the, the budget starts July 1st, I assume, right? And this would be, wouldn't this just be an entry in the budget that would just be part of the thing we'd vote on as a town? Or does towns, or does the town sometimes just shoot down the budget? We have to go back to it like the government does?
Well, it wouldn't be in it.
Source of funding.
It's, it's the source of funding, so we could make it a line item. We've done that in the past, capital, landfill compliance or whatever the name of it is. But you have to have the money to begin with in projected revenues and that's the problem.
Okay.
Because the budget passes, but all the source of funding, we're gonna be out of whack 200 and...
The borrowing, as like Rich said, the borrowing gives us the opportunity to do, do interest-only payments and, and, and meet it out over, you know, so many years in order to give us the solvency that we need to fund the rest of the budget.
Or, Mr. Chairman, reduce the rest of the budget by 231.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, that'd be the alternative. And... Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, that'd be the alternative. Again, we don't have two hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of fat and extravagance in the budget. Someone's gonna be the bad guy again as soon as they say, gee, we're gonna have to, because of two thirty-one, whatever the number's gonna be, is gonna come straight out of municipal side, it's not gonna be split with the other fifty-five percent of the budget, we know that, we can't go. My father would say, no way in God's green earth, are we gonna go up and have them say, yeah, let's split the deficit with you?
Yeah, like Brian says, it's definitely in the way you phrase it, because, yeah, two thirty-one, where we find that, I'd rather find, try to find that than try to find five forty-four, so. Again, I'll reiterate what Jenna said, maybe, maybe it might be, split these up.
Well, again, as Mr. Clark said, you're gonna sell it and people are gonna understand, the smaller number is just December thirty-first.
So that's why, that's why I gave you the option, because it's two different ways to, a couple of different ways to skin a cat, and if this is, if we wanna do two separate articles.
Contingent on.
We do two separate articles, the first one's for FY twenty-five, the second one is the balance of calendar year twenty-five, and your total is five forty-four if you pass both of them, or the subtotals that are shown there, depending on which one passes.
People gotta understand, if a smaller number passes, we're coming back in February.
Well, the small, yeah, the smaller number, if it's specifically stated for the balance of the calendar year, and that's what people think they're voting on, we can't pay the bills that.
Yeah, yes, that January first.
Pending, right.
Yeah, yeah.
So we gotta be clear about that, too.
You should also mention again that the six hundred thousand dollar grant is for design and engineering, and originally in October, I think you asked for nine thirty-five or something, and people were like, that's too much money.
Yeah.
Right? We thought we owed three hundred something thousand towards design and engineering, and that's not true, it's maintenance costs.
Correct.
So make that clear to the audience, because I don't think anybody, I didn't know that and I don't think anyone else knew that. We just saw this almost million dollar amount for design and engineering, so that's crazy.
Yeah, at that point, we had, we had gotten back channel good news that it was probably coming, but we didn't have it yet.
We didn't have it, so.
So we had to borrow the full amount. So when people at home say non-reimbursable grant or non-reimbursable, and Rich can probably speak to it better than I can on Jonathan, we put the, the big number in with the assumption we're gonna get the six, because we had to borrow the full amount because we didn't have the six. Now we have the six, so that number you just spoke about has come down.
So we're talking about packaging the message, I'm not the one offering to do this, but somebody who's a better talker than I am, might be a good idea to make like a little YouTube video, post it on the Dudley Town Channel, perfectly describing the situation we're talking about here and the consequences, and I bet you that might go over better than, you know, like a seven-page write-out that I see sometimes on there. I'm not sure who's the best person for that.
I'm not putting pressure on you though, but you're, you're one of the newer people and they're gonna say.
Oh, you had to throw me right in.
No, no, but they're gonna say this guy is not covering things up, he's not dirty, he's no, he's not gonna be honest with us.
And do we have a timeline yet on the design piece? We have the grant, when are they gonna start and when do they?
We still need paperwork, we, we've been notified we have the grant, we don't have, I don't have enough to tell Time and Barn to move forward with it. It's filtering in, it usually takes a few weeks more to get that information. We're not gonna waste a second, though. Soon as we get a good, I mean, the goal is to get a good price on the entire project so that we'll have something to actually talk about.
Mm-hmm.
And to negotiate with.
The other, Mr. Clark.
Are you related?
Richard Clark, the report wrote, I note the date, February's tenth, and we haven't had the blizzard of the century yet, but normally the town meetings are times of the year when we don't have to worry about that. Do we have an alternate date? If, if that happens, if you will, that cataclysmic event happens to occur on the tenth of February twenty twenty-five?
We, we did draft it, but we usually just pro forma say the next day will be the rain date and weather date. If it's a big blizzard, we could repost it and, and just advertise it appropriately.
Yes, it wouldn't change, the weather wouldn't change what's on the warrant, it's already gonna be publicized, if the date has to change, we would just follow whatever guidance or whatever we have to do.
I think we drafted the second, the next day, February eleventh, for the continuation slash weather date. So that's the game plan, Mr. Chairman's men?
That's my opinion, that's how I would do it, is have two.
Two articles?
Yeah, give them choices.
That'll work.
Yeah, and then, you know, explain, one is calendar, one is fiscal, and one is due, we have to pay our bills.
Okay.
If we don't.
Are we gonna need to rewrite this, John, and then come back with a recommendation, or are we allowed to make a recommendation?
I'm gonna have, ask Olivia to alter it right here and now with the two different amounts while we're sitting here, and maybe we could talk about some other stuff.
All right. Go to Jay, transfer from FAA Reserve, request to apply FAA Reserve, emergency costs incurred since July first, twenty twenty-four, hope to approve transfer or transfers or take any action, any other action relative thereto. Mr. Administrator.
I think in the folder, there's a couple of additional bills that show U B keys and additional email address subscriptions, and that was because we had a breach a few weeks ago, which is why we all now have to do two-factor authentication and, and beef up the, our security posture on email addresses specifically. Our cybersecurity person is working on, this is gonna be an insurance claim, and I know he's contacted Rich's office for the bulk of fixing what was wrong with it, but in the meantime, we had to make a fifteen hundred dollar purchase, purchase some network keys and some additional email addresses, and we're asking the FAA, because of the emergency that existed, to cover that amount.
Is that this Amazon business invoice, twelve oh seven thirty-six, is that correct? And then you get this retrofit, something Barracuda?
Yeah, it should be, it should be high limit.
That amount, minimum?
That amount and a total of these three of us. That's something, the total is, includes other things, I only need this, this, and this, comes up to fifteen eighty-five or something. Let me actually open my office. So six. Oh, fifteen thirty-five.
Fifteen thirty-four twenty for these two, so it'll be a transfer from FAA. What accountant are we transferring this to?
I'm gonna, I'll bring it to him so you can read it. It's going to sign the security expenses, this is the line I have right here.
That's it, right there?
Yeah.
Cybersecurity. Does anyone wanna try to make more sure of this?
Yeah, what does it come from?
So.
And, and the dollar amount was fifteen thirty-four twenty?
Correct.
Do I get that right?
Right down here, fifteen thirty-four twenty.
Mm-hmm, to transfer from which account?
So, yeah, that's, it'd be FAA reserves to the cybersecurity account, and that's the account number.
Oh, brother, okay, I make a motion to transfer fifteen thirty-four twenty from account six hundred plus two fifty, no.
From FAA reserve.
From the FAA reserve.
From the FAA reserve account to the cybersecurity expense account.
And just read the number.
And the cybersecurity expense account is zero zero one dash one three six dash five seven eight seven dash zero 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 zero.
We have a second?
Second.
Again, any discussion, any questions about anything? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. Transfer done.
Keep rolling, Mr. Administrator.
Keep rolling.
I'm gonna go to Departmental Communications and I'll start with Treasurer Collect, excuse me, Treasurer Collector, water selectmen signatures, have not previously obtained BOS signatures for borrowing on water sewer loan, no vote required. Town Treasurer.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, three documents to sign. We have the Mass Clean Water Trust, and this is Pool Twenty-Six, regardless, we have a bond and two copies of the, excuse me, the certificate and two copies of the bonds. Remember, two years ago, you had a temporary note, we're gonna make it a permanent note, this is the state revolving fund.
Wanna do like another one or is that it? You just picked something up, nothing else to sign, right?
Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, FedEx, nothing, nothing against the United States Postal Service, Mr. Chairman.
Your pension check shows up every month.
Is that in the drive down?
Wanna do your departmental presentation?
Yes, appreciate everybody who's received or hasn't received any tax bills, always appreciate that there is a wonderful group in Dudley, whatever the situation is, everybody's been very amicable when, when calling, tax dollar amounts, of course, are calculated by the assessors, but it's usually anytime there's a sale or there's a name change or something that, that's been returned, everybody's been very good with that, everybody's famous, favorite time of the year is coming, we're going to be printing out our excise bills, that's the big, the big commitment. They will align with the water sewer billing, we already have the check going out to Karen The best we can do is to make sure that the pricing, to have them processed outside of the office, pretty much mirror what it costs for the vendor to do it. So in English, it's gonna be sixty-eight or sixty-nine cents to go through and mail them out, as opposed to trying to do it by hand and get two of Steve Sullivan's just in, in one envelope, that's the price we pay, we're, we're not doing the manual portion of it. And we would never want to include more than one, you know, more than one commitment in an envelope either. So if you're driving a car today, you should be looking for an excise bill, hate to say it, all of the information as to how that calculate, that's the only place where we don't maintain a local database. The assessor is great, but the DOT, the Registry of Motor Vehicles, is the one that maintains that, so if you're driving a car as of today, you should be paying an excise bill. If you bought something in December, there's always gonna be that lag, that's the catch-up, but of course, if there's any questions, we'll be happy to, to address them. And for everybody who's going down the Florida or has relatives who've left, please be in touch, I can't email a bill because there's too many personal identifiers on it, but we can direct you to get a bill forwarded to you or, or what have you. We're gonna have a insurance advisory committee meeting for the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust on January twenty-ninth to set the, the health insurance rates. For that, for the meeting, selectmen's meeting after, I'll be able to give the board a report as to what we expect the increase to be. And again, we'd have our open enrollment in April and in May for a seven-one start.
Excellent. Any questions for the Collector, Treasurer Collector, sorry? Good, thanks, Rich. Town Administrator.
October cash is posted, so Rich and I are working on getting everything reconciled for October, and then next meeting, I hope to present an update for year-to-date, where we stand, and continue to work through posting November and December at this time. Deb Tibido is back a couple days a week, a few hours, so she's helping me catch up right now, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Iron EMS, good? Chief Collins.
Just real quick, sending our condolences to Charlton Police Department and the Reddick family. Rich Reddick passed away suddenly yesterday, he was an officer for Charlton and Saltbridge for over twenty-three years, and a longtime Dudley resident, and it's tragic event, but he's gonna be missed.
Thank you, Chief. Highway, cemeteries, beach, transfer station, town hall, good? Town Administrator, you're not on the agenda, but.
If we can go back, Mr. Chairman, Olivia's added that additional article.
Thank you, Olivia.
And we'd be asking for the FAA to go through and vote their recommendations on now the four articles. And like I said, the petition articles start today, so we have a week before the selectmen have to vote their recommendations, approve the article for posting, we'll have to do a Tuesday meeting, but the FAA is welcome to do it now and you don't have to come back to the next one.
Appreciate that.
So you want us to just go one, two, three on this?
Just vote on it as amended and posted?
We can do that, you guys wanna, make sure you can read it there.
If you can vote on it.
I mean, I can read it, but thank you, that's better.
There we go. I can see it, so you can see it.
First one's a three twelve, all right.
Yep, there's a three twelve.
Treasure pool. Okay. Good on Article Two.
Yep.
Three. Is that the right wording?
So.
Or second half of calendar year, or should that be?
What we would do, Mr. Chairman, is if you could vote the usual way and give me the ability to talk to town council for review of, of legal content, not any change in the meaning of the article, to make sure it is correct.
Yeah, that's fine.
In case that highlighted part needs to be changed at all.
Yeah, 'cause I would still almost suggest it be for the first half of fiscal year twenty-six, but.
Yeah, that's confusing to many people.
You know, that's what I.
Can, we can change.
Kinda change that, not if it says go back and do it the other way, just. Kinda change that, not, and if it says go back and do it the other way, just...
Yeah, just Ju, July, or just say July through December twenty twenty-five. That's how I would do it.
Me too.
First half of fiscal of twenty-six. That make sense?
Yeah, I, I'm good either way, as I said, that we can...
Are you looking for a vote on, no, looking for a vote from us, recommendation on Article four, right? That's not, that has nothing to do with us, really. We, do we have, we don't have an appointment to the Board of Health?
No, you just defer, defer to the petition.
All right.
It would be the Board of Health.
So, Articles one, two, and three, does anybody wanna make a motion on accepting Articles one, two, recommending Articles one, two, and three?
Motion to accept Articles one, two, and three? Going forward.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on those three? All right, all in favor say aye.
Would, uh, put that, give it, in the motion, give me the ability to change it after legal review without change the content of the article.
Okay, so you wanna amend the motion and add that to it?
Yeah. Consider Articles one through three, give or take potential wording to differences that are, don't change the actual context.
Okay, perfect.
All in favor.
All right, second.
Second.
Second. Any more discussion on this? All right, all in favor say aye.
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 All right.
That's all you do.
James Wood.
No, you just read it. This is like, this has been my life for the last week, so.
James Wood.
How's that?
Was in the comments. Cut us off.
If you have family members in California, reach out. Uh, it's been a tough week for them especially, but like for the whole nation. Like, it's, it's so hard to see those photos, um, of neighborhoods that were there and then twelve hours later just aren't. Also, uh, go back and double-check the things you've read, maybe in the news. Um, I know I saw a stat like on Tuesday of last week, and by Thursday, I found out that it was wrong, but I kept thinking that it was correct, is specific to budgeting in L.A. and that being part of the problem. So, um, whenever there's, you know, a time of emergency, we tend to glom onto the first thing that we read and, and sometimes that's just not correct. So, it's, it's just a good thing to think about since we have a little bit of distance, um, and this kind of thing could happen anywhere. I mean, it, most of the state was on fire in October, so we've kind of already been through it. But yeah, if you've got family out that way, just, you know, check in if they need anything, recharge the community.
Mr. Johnson.
To that point, you know, Asheville, North Carolina is still devastated. And now California, that's, uh, if, if you can help, help and... We're going into, uh, it might actually be winter now. Keep an eye on your, uh, your neighbors and the elderly if they need some help.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody that showed up, everybody that's getting involved with the municipal aggregate energy, with the, um, articles, um, the discussion to better way to, uh, word them and, and put them through so we get the money we need now, while thinking ahead, um, as well as with the timeline and the budgeting process and the special meeting coming up. And, uh, just keep in touch with each other and stay safe. Thank you.
Um, I just wanna echo what Jenna said, uh, kinda ironically. I have a cousin in Florida, and after the hurricane, she texted me and said, I got three walls, a door, and a grill. Everything else was gone. And my wife's brother just retired from L.A. County Fire as a paramedic. Wednesday last week, he said, we're in good shape, and then on Friday, he said, say a prayer. So, if you pray, say a prayer if you can help out, and Mr. Johnson said, help out. Importantly though, take care of yourself, take care of your family, take care of your neighbors. Chief talked about a tragic incident tonight. Give someone an extra minute if you have to to listen to them, to help them. Tough time of year, it's a tough time all around. But again, thank everyone for participating tonight, and we'll have more information to come. And just come get your information, come to a meeting, show up, participate. We got two new members that are active. We need four more. Virtually every board in town could use help, so just stay involved, people. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, everybody, multiple members. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Have a good night, everybody.